I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Store Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Greenfield has been excused. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Seaman has been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Councilman Gazer?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
And Chairman Bubai.
Chairman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge allegiance and then a moment of silence for our troops serving here and abroad.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Any correspondence?
Yes, I have an email from Michael Herbert. He is the attorney for case SD 2998 Wadsworth Development, which was on tonight's agenda. They did submit revised plans. However, he wants to give the board professionals plenty of time to review them before the hearing, so he asked that this be carried to our December meeting, which is December 14th, with no further notice.
Let me just make that announcement. And which meeting in December, Aileen?
December 14th.
Okay, application SD 2998 Wadsworth Development LLC be carried to the board's December 14th, 2023 meeting. That is a live meeting that begins 7:00 here in the main meeting room. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you. And that's all the correspondence I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. Resolutions. First one up, case number SD 3009, Augustine Kim, resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters Cristiano Husar, Leggio, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yep.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
And Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next one is case number SD 3012, 391 Oak Glen LLC. Also submission waivers. Eligible voters Cristiano Husar, Leggio, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yep.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
And Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. All right, we have submission waivers. Case number SP 117, D.R. Horton, Inc., New Jersey, Howell Ridge.
Mr. Chairman John Junko, Judano, Hall and Cecil, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a request for the review of waivers for the project.
Okay.
Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an October 2nd, 2023 review letter. The submission waivers specifically start at the bottom of page eight. I've had the opportunity to review these items with their team. Item five, I know, is in the process of being submitted, and items C through J, they have agreed that they would provide on a subsequent submission. So for those reasons, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for deeming the application complete.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, likewise, the waivers are reasonable. We've reviewed them at length with your staff and Laura Newman and modified some of the applications to eliminate a number of the waivers, such as those that Mr. Newman just described. The remaining ones, as I stated, are all reasonable. Do you want me to go through them item by item?
No, she said everything's good, and when you come back with the application, we can go through it then.
Well, we'll present the full testimony at that hearing.
Exactly. Okay. All right. You good?
I have, I'd like you to vote yes, so we can continue along our application process.
All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
No, okay, I'll entertain the motion.
The motion.
If I have a motion and a second, Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yep.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bubai?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, so next up is our master plan hearing.
Thank you, John. Take care.
So, I'm here tonight.
Mike, please.
Hold on, just before you get started, let me swear. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
As a matter of fact.
I do. Is your microphone included? It is. Yep, so I'm here tonight to present the Howell Township Reexamination Report. Under the municipal land use law, a reexamination report needs to be done at least every 10 years. We did a land use plan and reexam in the summer of 2022, so it was pretty recent. So really, the only changes and differences between this plan to the previous one were some zoning recommendations. So I'll just run through them quickly. They were that the township should evaluate the establishment of conditional use standards for flex space in the SED zones and the HD1 zone south of Lanes Mill Road and evaluate eliminating warehouse/distribution uses from these areas. The township should consider revising the flex definition to include trade contractors, businesses, and research and development uses in any zone in which flex use is permitted as a conditional use if it is part of an overall flex use development. We proposed conditions for consideration for flex space, including but not limited to no building containing flex space shall be larger than 75,000 square feet in area, no single unit of flex space shall be larger than 60% of the building area or exceed 45,000 square feet in building area, the building height of a flex space shall not exceed 32 feet, and all loading and unloading shall take place at loading docks to be located at the rear of the building, no more than one loading dock per 7,500 square feet of flex space shall be permitted, no flex space shall operate any outdoor activity between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and the facades of all structures facing public streets which are located within 500 feet of a residential zone shall be constructed of materials which are brick, decorative masonry, or a combination of materials which will be compatible with uses in the area. The rear of building architecture not within the requirements need not comply with bump-out requirements or treatment requirements. No storage shall be permitted outside, no temporary storage units, storage pods, or storage trailers shall be permitted, the overnight parking of vehicles associated with the flex space use shall be permitted, provided that such parking is identified on our approved site plan. Trash receptacles and dumpsters shall be screened from public streets and adjacent residential uses using masonry material. Screening walls shall be a masonry material that is compatible with the character of the building facade. We also recommend the township consider adding permitted uses in SED zones, including vertical farming, self-storage, indoor recreation, including but not limited to basketball, hockey, baseball, and trade contractor businesses. We recommend the township review definitions to eliminate any contradictory definitions. We recommend allowing data centers as permitted uses in the SED and HD zoning districts. Recommend, the township consider adding the following uses in the HD1 zone south of Lanes Mill Road, and they are banquet facilities excluding concert halls and nightclubs, business expo centers, four-story buildings as a conditional use with an enhanced setback and maximum height of 60 feet. And we recommend the township consider removing the SED zone at the Victory Road, Oakland Road, and Route 547 area, and also look into considering the overlay zone that's SED AREE 2, which has not been developed, is AREE 2 be considered for SED. We recommend the township consider adding additional opportunities for the redevelopment area along the Route 9 area as well as Harms Pit. Consider allowing banquet facilities on farm properties as a conditional use. Evaluate the site plan checklist requirements for banquet facilities on farm properties. Consider undertaking a utility plan element of the master plan, which would investigate appropriate locations for solar facilities, battery storage facilities for public utilities, as well as evaluate the utility service throughout the township. Encourage the utilization of green infrastructure with incentives, and consider allowing greenhouses on rooftops of warehouses while still maintaining maximum building height. So I believe a number of these ordinances are ready to go, so if, you know, this board chooses to act favorably and adopt the master plan reexam tonight, I think the ordinances are ready to be introduced at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board have any comments or questions? All right, with that being said, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody from the public has any questions or comments, please come forward.
For the whole reexamination report?
Okay, I just need to swear again first, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Bob Carroll, last name C-A-R-R-O-L-L, 406 Oak Glen Road.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I just caught this last minute, and I didn't even know it was on the reexamination report. It looks like it's under the recommendations, number seven, for the impervious coverage in ARE zone. It says at the bottom, "recommendation has been reconsidered by the township is no longer relevant." So does that mean that's not being brought up anymore? Like, I didn't even know that that was on the table for consideration.
So there's statutory requirements for doing a reexamination report. There's different things we need to evaluate, and that was a recommendation in a prior reexamination report.
Can you guys hear her? I can't hear her.
Oh, it's on. Sorry. Sorry, that was a recommendation in a prior reexamination report that just, you know, ultimately, the township has chose not to act on.
Okay, I just want to know if I need to keep an eye out for it? Like, obviously, that was from the 2019 reexamination, correct?
Yes.
And that was a recommendation, and that's been on the table this whole time, so much like these other ordinances that were passed in the meantime, like, that could have passed. I wouldn't have had any idea, and obviously, it affects me, so I just want to know, like, do I need to pay attention to this? Is this something that's going to be brought up again in the future, and would I be notified?
So, it was in the 2019 report, we're saying it's no longer relevant, correct?
That's what it says. It says, "This recommendation has been reconsidered by the township and is no longer relevant." So does that mean they're taking it off the table, like, it's not something that I'm going to have to watch for?
Right, so that's not a recommendation that we're continuing going forward. That's, you know...
Okay, so this is like a reevaluation now, so the next reevaluation, I assume, is going to be in four years?
It's, the statutory requirement is at least every 10 years, but you can do it as often as you want.
Okay.
So these planning documents, you know, they're living, breathing documents, so this town is a very proactive town in terms of responding to its planning needs, so we oftentimes do it many more times, you know, in that 10-year period. So, but anytime that we do do it, there's a public notice that goes out about it.
Okay, so a public notice that says, you know, there's considered changes to the ARE district is...
Well, the public notice would say that we're going to do a master plan reexamination, and then it tells you where the document is, and if you want to take a look at the document, how to access it.
Okay, yeah, obviously, I didn't pay attention to it in 2019. I just happened to catch it and saw that it would have impacted me if it was acted upon, so I just wanted to know, going forward, how do I notice when something that could potentially impact me is on the table? So I could attend the meetings.
You have to watch the council agendas, because they would pass an ordinance related to this report.
Okay.
We don't do it, they do it.
Okay, I'm just moving forward. It doesn't seem as if it's anything relevant, but just, I'm trying to learn the system, so I know going forward, when something that could be...
Well, there's a couple different ways. There's at least a newspaper notice that goes out anytime, you know, there's a land use ordinance, but if you monitor the town's website, they have the notices and the agendas also that go through the ordinances.
Okay, so...
And there's two parts to it. There's a first reading, which is the introduction, and then there's a second reading, where is the public hearing, so it's a two-part process.
Okay, so it would be on the township's website, and most of the zoning changes initiate here with the master plan and the planning board?
Well, the master plan doesn't change any zoning. What the master plan is, is a policy document, and it establishes the vision that the town has for the way that certain areas of the town are going to be developed or not developed and the planning for it. The actual legislation of the ordinances is at the township council level, and their ordinances are supposed to be substantially consistent with this policy document. So this document serves as sort of the core of how the ordinances are going to read, but the actual legislation comes from the governing body.
Okay, and there's council meetings, I assume? I've been to zoning meetings, this is my first planning meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's council meetings.
Just trying to learn the operation.
No, I understand.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, Ron, would you explain to the people who are here the process with this document, the steps it's going to go through before everything on here is actually adopted?
Sure, so like I said, the municipal land use law requires, well, let me start with, the town has a document, it's called the master plan. The master plan has different elements to it. It has a land use element that talks about the various sections of town and recommends certain zoning and permitted uses for the sections of town. It has a housing element that goes through demographics and lays out strategies on how to comply with the state's affordable housing mandates. We have a circulation plan element. We have an open space element, goes through identifying areas that the town may be interested in acquiring, other areas that the town has acquired, how to maintain, and how to best maximize the benefit of those areas. And all of those elements come together in this one document that's called the master plan. That master plan, like I said, is a policy document. It doesn't change any zoning, it's not a law, but what it does is create the underlying policy that our zoning and land use ordinances spring from. Our ordinances should be substantially consistent with the policy recommendations that are contained in the master plan. Now, the master plan document, that is a document that's adopted by this body, the Planning Board. The municipal land use law has identified this body as being particularly qualified based upon what we do here to establish, you know, those policy goals. It's also important to understand that the membership of the Planning Board has four different classes. We have Mr. Leggio, who represents the mayor, the class one member. We have Mr. Greenfield, who is the class two member. Where does Mr. Greenfield work?
He's the DPW.
The DPW, head of DPW. We have class three, you heard our councilman just speak, so we have multiple members of the governing body that are represented here, members of the, you know, employees of the municipality and regular residents, so it's a good cross-section of people to bring together. Now, that master plan has to be reexamined, so it doesn't become stale, at least every 10 years. This, as I said, this municipality is very proactive in the planning process. We tend to reexamine it often, particularly if we find that there's, you know, new uses or new variants of uses that need to be addressed. I can, like, I can give you an example, if you go back to like the 1990s, when cell towers started popping up, no master plan was talking about cell towers, and whether, you know, you had years to go or not, it was beneficial for a town to start to address it. You know, back during that time also, you first started to have gas stations putting in convenience stores, and that was something that needed to be done. So there are, you know, it's always a struggle to keep up with current trends in planning, current trends in technology, so we tend to do it more often than the 10 years. Now, once the master plan is adopted by this body, basically, the governing body takes a look at it, and what the governing body can do is take a look at the recommendations, take a look at the policies, and if they agree with it, what they do is introduce ordinances that put it into play, that put it into effect. But those ordinances, you've heard some of these recommendations are somewhat general in nature, the ordinances become very specific.
So now, between there, forgive my ignorance, who, this board approves the master plan, there's recommendations, who brings those recommendations for an ordinance proposal?
The governing body has the document, once we approve it, and they will come up with the ordinances. They're the legislative body. So, and that's what I'm saying, what they'll do is they'll put the ordinances together, but they have to do it in, there's actually three parts to it. They'll draft the ordinance, and then they introduce it on first reading, but that's all that's done. They say, "We're introducing an ordinance, this is what it's supposed to do." That ordinance actually gets referred to this body, and we make a recommendation as to whether we believe it's substantially consistent with the master plan. It goes back to the governing body, and they have a public hearing where you and other residents can have an opportunity to look at it in advance, because there'll be a public notice, and ask, you know, ask questions, make comments, and then the governing body would vote upon it.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep an eye out for what meetings I would need to look for when that comes up. You know, a lot of these recommendations, you know, there were several in there that were, you know, recommended, and then I saw passed in June of '22, you know, like, obviously, those ordinances passed already, so they're not even, you know, relevant at this point.
What this document did also is it kind of updated you on what had happened since the last reexamination.
Okay.
So that's what that was.
Just trying to learn the process, that's all. I know these things take time, and, you know, the residents freak out about stuff, but really, it's been in planning for several years, so I'm just trying to learn how to get on the front end of it, so it's not, you know, I saw this three days ago, and I was like, wow, that could have really made a big change.
What is your particular issue? Like, is your property on a plan, are you in ARE 2 right now?
I'm ARE 6.
ARE 6.
And if I'm not mistaken, I'm grandfathered under the old laws, the bulk and dimensional requirements. The newest ones, I think impervious coverage is something crazy, like 3% or something like that? Like, on my nine acres, my 1,000-square-foot house and 4,000-square-foot barn are over the impervious coverage limit. Then I learned that since my property hadn't been subdivided since before the old, you know, before the new dimensional requirements, you know, I was still under the old one. So obviously...
When you say a barn, are you pharmacist?
Yes.
The, if you're pharmacist, and you have, you know, you're in agricultural use, and you have best management practices from the county ag board, then a lot of this doesn't, would not even apply to you.
Okay, I know, I recently put an addition on my home. Under the new requirements, I couldn't have put an addition on my home, because I was already over my impervious coverage, but because I'm held to the older standards, it wasn't an issue, and I didn't want that to be an issue going forward. If I want to put up a shed or something like that, like, if you're already over your impervious coverage, you're pretty much done. You can't do anything else with the property. And I understand, you know, in the interest of keeping things rural, you know, the new standards are much tighter, but like I said, I had two small buildings on almost nine acres, and it was over by these standards.
As I said, your alternate route is to go through the county ag board?
Okay.
To get approval, and those rules supersede a lot of what the local zoning is for farming purposes.
Okay, that's also good information to know. I try and keep an eye out, just so that I know. It's something I ran into in the past and saw it again here, so I just, again, trying to learn the process, and out of some things coming down the line, I have a chance to attend the meetings and voice my opinion.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. Anybody else in the public?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Betty Velez Gimble, 97, Victory Road.
Could you just spell your name for us, ma'am?
V as in Victor, E L E Z, G I M as in Mary, B as in boy, E L.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I do have some questions, and I'm going to thank you in advance for your patience, as I am a novice and kind of been thrown in baptism by fire, so to speak. So with the master plan and going over it, the stormwater recommendation, and I just want to confirm that my comprehension is correct, that the town ordinance will serve to permit an automatic update in accordance with the new rules set forth by NJDEP. Am I correct?
That's an obligation. All municipalities have to adopt the new DEP stormwater regs by July of 2024.
Thank you. Okay, and then number two, the trade contractor business on page 11. It's permitted use on AD2, 3, SED and SED light districts. This is just my opinion. It just seems to be a little bit unfair to the middle-class guy who has a small business and owns a large lot that could actually accommodate the conditions that you set forth. It really shouldn't be a blanket restriction. Again, that's just my opinion for the middle-class guy. Moving to section D, flex space and eliminating warehouse distribution uses from SED and HD1. It says the building height shall not exceed 32 feet. So I would like to know where the measurement begins? Is it at ground level, middle of the road, the curb height? The reasoning for my question is because we see that on the Victory Road application, we have eight feet of fill and then a 45-foot building on top of that, so I'm curious as to the height. So I'm curious as to the height.
Ultimately, the definition on how to calculate the height would be part of the legislation. I don't know that we had a recommendation in the reexamination report, did we?
No, we didn't have a recommendation on how to calculate the height.
The governing body will have the ability to determine how height will be calculated to, to that level.
So at the town council?
Yeah.
Thank you. All loading and unloading at docks at the rear of the building. What would be considered the front of the building, the rear of the building? Is it the location of the road? Is it the front door, the ingress or the egress of the building? Is it the road?
The frontage of the property.
I'm sorry?
The frontage along the road is the front of the building.
Frontage along the road. Thank you. The next is no flex space shall operate. Any outdoor activity between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. What's considered outdoor activity?
Anything not within a building.
So the unloading and loading of trucks is considered outdoor?
If it happens outdoors, yes.
Well, the truck is going to back up to the loading bay, which is outdoors, and the truck opening and the garage opening are going to meet. Does that consider now an indoor?
If anything that's happening outside is outside, so yeah, you could not load and unload trucks.
Perfect, thank you. What about idling trucks?
There's a state, state regulation that prohibits idling in excess of three minutes.
Thank you. Would it be possible to align the time with the current noise ordinance of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
So this is a recommendation ultimately would be up to the council to determine the hours that they would limit outdoor activity to.
Thank you. It states the facade is discussed as well with attention to the residential zone, but would the planning board consider increasing the buffer areas as well from the 50 feet to maybe 100 or more when it comes to residential areas and including farms?
Again, so these are recommendations to the council, and then the council ultimately drafts the ordinances.
Will the council be receiving my questions?
You can go to a meeting and speak to them.
Oh, so repeat these questions at the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll continue though, because I obviously want to get to my baby, Victory Road. You're removing the, the recommendation is to remove the S E D zone at the Victory Road Oak Glen Road, Route 547, and that's on page 80. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm fully aware, though, that the present application is grandfathered, however, I'm having faith. What is your vision here when the S E D zone is removed? What are you proposing to rezone it as, since most of Victory Road is A R E six?
I believe anything that's not currently developed as S E D would be A R E six, but ultimately it would be up to the council, I think, to determine what.
So it's a sure bet that it's going to be A R A six. So again, then, what happens to the re-steal property that's formerly the disanti property? Would that also be A R E six, making that a non-conforming conditional use?
I believe there's a grandfather provision on that property.
So you would leave S E D zone for the re-steal?
Well, again, you're asking questions, the ordinance isn't before us, so these are just recommendations.
Okay. So there's a possibility.
That's likely how it would be handled, because otherwise it would become an existing non-conforming use, which would be against the zoning. But again, it's subject to the ordinance, which is not here.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. And then also, moving to page 81, the township should consider allowing banquet facilities on farm properties as a conditional use. What would those conditions look like? Is that also the governing body?
Yes.
Thank you. Are events included in that banquet facilities?
I don't understand what you're saying.
Farm events, because I know that was brought up in the past, farm events, is that going to be included with-
Could you give me an example of what a farm event?
Vendors, craft vendors, yes, and Oktoberfest, thank you.
Mr. Cuchero, just out of curiosity, these are recommendations. We don't have, as Laura has stated, we don't have the ordinance in front of us. So these are, are good questions, but I believe these are questions that need to be said at the council meeting.
Well, I think it can be said both places. It can be said at the council meeting, but to the extent that they're incorporated in a recommendation, you know, we can give clarity on that.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Any questions or comments? All right, seeing that nobody's coming up, I'm going to close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman, as well as being the reexamination report, we did advertise this as being also eligible to be incorporated into the master plan. So tonight, what you would be voting upon is to adopt the reexamination report and to also include it in the master plan. I'll make a motion to adopt the, the master plan reexamination report and to include it.
Everybody's very excited.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman, bye-bye.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next up, we got a couple of applications. First application is case number S P 1046A, Bank of America. Mrs. Pike's going to recuse herself.
Yeah, she comes back after.
Good evening. Tom Letizia, I am an attorney with the law firm of Troutman, Pepper, Hamilton, Sanders. I'm here representing Bank of America National Association, which is the applicant in this matter and is the tenant on the subject site. A notice was provided of this hearing in accordance with municipal land use law and proof of same was submitted to Ms. Ribano. So I believe the board does have jurisdiction to hear this application. Council, is that, do you confirm that?
Ms. Ribano reviews the notice.
Yeah, the proof was in, sorry.
Thank you. You may recall the board granted submission waivers and deemed the application complete last month. We also had a virtual professionals meeting last month with the board attorney and C M E to review technical issues, which was helpful in preparing for tonight's hearing. Just some background, the subject, Bank of America branch building is located on the property identified as block 54.01, lot nine on the township tax map. The bank's address is 4,005 Route 9, but its frontage is actually on Old Ridge Road. The bank is adjacent to and has access to and from the Old Ridge Plaza Shopping Center. The site is approximately 0.7 acres and is developed with a bank and associated parking and drive-through lanes. This bank has three ATM locations, which we will review in the presentation. The ATMs are available to customers 24 hours a day. The surrounding uses of the bank are as follows. To the north is Old Ridge Road and Route 9 Jug Handle. To the east is Old Ridge Road Park and Ride. To the south is the Old Ridge Plaza Retail Center, specifically a dumpster area for that center. And to the west is parking. The zoning of the property is located in the town's H D one Highway Development Zone District, which includes financial institutions as a permitted use. So tonight's proposal is to upgrade its, the bank's external lighting in order to be in compliance with New Jersey's security lighting standards for banks with automated teller machines. The scope of the lighting changes is limited to replacing fixtures of existing canopy pole and wall-mounted lights and adding one new pole and wall lights on the south side of the property. The plan results in an average light intensity of 9.3-foot candles, which is above the average lighting intensity of 0.5-foot candles allowed by the ordinance at section 188-22. Thus, a design waiver is requested to exceed the average allowable illumination level. I should point out that the 9.3 average foot candle level is when one just measures within the areas of the site around the security lighting. When measuring the level of lighting for the entire parcel at grade, the average illumination resulting from the proposed plan is 4.0-foot candles. Obviously, we still need the waiver, but that is actually the exceedance beyond your ordinance. State law mandates certain lighting levels for the safety and security of customers accessing ATM facilities, whether at drive-through facilities or inside a lobby of a bank. That statute is called the Electronic Fund Transfer Privacy Act, and it is cited at NJ S A 17:16K. Section 10 of the law requires a, a minimum level of foot candles around an ATM, and our engineer expert will go into more detail on what, what those lighting requirements are and how they apply to this bank site. The act by its express terms supersedes and preempts all codes and ordinances of a county and a municipality pertaining to lighting levels around ATMs. So unless you have similar questions of me, I'll ask my engineer to come forward.
What work, I know we saw you guys, I believe, because I saw you put the resolution there, it was 18, right? When we-
Correct.
What, was any of that work that was presented in 18 ever installed or completed?
Yes, it was installed, yes. And our engineer will tell you about that 2018 improvement.
Thank you.
So I call Paul Much.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Paul Much, M as in Mary, U T C H, from Stonefield Engineering located at 15 Spring Street in Princeton, Jersey.
You guys can sit down if you want, there's a microphone on the table.
Yeah, the thing's a microphone. Keep it comfortable.
Hey, council, if you could just qualify the witness.
Yes, Mr. Much, can you please provide the board with both your educational and professional background, please?
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Graduated from Rowan University with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. Practiced in the field for roughly 11 years with specific experience on applications that you'll see this evening, and even specific experience on this site. And I've been accepted by more than 100 land use boards in the state of New Jersey as an expert in civil engineering testimony.
Board will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Much, let's begin by having you describe the property, which is the subject of this application and the improvements being proposed.
Certainly, I think the board and everyone here is, is familiar with this site, so I'll keep it brief. The overall project that we're looking at tonight is part of the bank's nationwide program to upgrade all of their sites to LED lights and to ensure that they're complying with the various state statutes nationwide, New Jersey being one of the more strict states as far as ATM security lighting, just ensuring all of their sites are upgraded to LED for the energy efficiency and compliant with various lighting requirements in New Jersey. The 2018 application that's been mentioned was specific to an additional ATM that was proposed in the drive, the exteriormost drive-through lane of the bank. The lights installed at that time are installed today. They illuminate essentially what we'll call the left side of the site or that northern side of the site today. None of those lights that were proposed, that were proposed and installed as part of those, of that application will be impacted by this application. All of those lights remain. Really, the focus of this application is just to piece together the rest of the site. What was left out of that 2018 application, because it was specific to an ATM, is included in this exterior lighting program application that you're seeing this evening, is the entrance vestibules that are associated with the bank, which is really the last two pieces of the security radiuses that they have to provide. There are two ATMs that are provided that are 24 hours, that have the key cards that you can insert into the door. One is located in that sort of exterior, I'll call it a sunroom, that's on the front of the bank, that oval position at the bottom left corner of the bank. And then there's also an ATM in the entrance vestibule of the bank, which also has a card reader, and both of those ATMs can be accessed at night. The 2018 application did not take those into consideration, this application does, and there's some modest lighting upgrades that have to be made to bring compliance to those areas. You'll see on the plans, there is a mention of a company, G M R, that is Banks, the Banks Lighting Consultant, that comes out and does light studies of all of their sites nationwide. They found that a small area of this site was still in non-compliance since those 2018 upgrades. That area, if anybody's taken the opportunity to drive the site at night, I did it tonight, you can, it's pretty obvious on site where the dark space is, and it's directly to the right or the south of the building, and that is where the lighting is proposed, any new lighting is proposed. To stay with the theme of the site, there is one new decorative pole that's proposed, basically it's centered between two other decorative poles directly to the south of the building or the right side of the page. That is labeled U U six. That'll be a 10-foot-high pole-mounted decorative light that will match the other lights on site. That is, that is one of the new lights that's proposed. The other new lights that are proposed are the S G one and the S E two, located at the bottom right and the top right corners of the building. And those, that combination of those three lights allow us to illuminate the areas that are within the security radius on the side of the building associated with, with mostly ATM one, which is in the main entrance vestibule, and, and bring the site into compliance with the state statute. So those are the only newly introduced lights as part of this application. In addition, we'll be upgrading some of the other lights on the application that were not involved with the 2018 application. There's a series of lights under the small overhang of the building, there's three labeled D B one, there's actually four there that are located around the main entrance, and there's also B A one located next to that sort of sunroom type area on the front of the bank. Those are existing lights that will be placed in kind but with LED bulbs. Couple of them appear to already have been replaced with some LEDs, but they'll be new fixtures. They may be modestly brighter or just because they're new, but not looking to change the level of illumination in those areas, looking to just bring those to LED. In addition, we will be replacing the heads on all of the decorative lights with light fixtures but LED lights within them. So all of the existing 10-foot-high decorative lights that circulate the southern side and to the south of the building or page right, and also to the eastern side, which would be paid, or the top of the page, will be replaced with new LED fixtures that'll look the same, function the same, be comparable in illumination levels, but just upgraded to the more energy-efficient LED. Now, when all of this goes into place, what we've seen and what we're asking for, for relief, is that if you did not put the new lights on site, the illumination level overall on the site would be 3.8-foot candles. When you introduce those three new lights to the site and you take into consideration all of the other lights that are upgraded to LED, that average increases to 4.0-foot candles. So really, what the waiver and the application that we're proposing tonight is the difference- of 0.2-foot candles overall. So anyone that's driving past the site, that's visiting the site, the only discernible difference on-site will be some of the colors of the lights around the entrance, and it'll be a little bit brighter on the southern side, which faces the loading zone of that commercial building. So we feel that it's a, it's a modest upgrade that will make us compliant with the ATM state statute, as well as upgrade all the lights to LED, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or, or, or concerns with that plan.
Yeah, you know I'm gonna have questions.
Yeah, you're the light guy, just the light guy.
Of course.
So, uh, the pages C5 and C6 indicate all of the various light fixtures that you're proposing to either replace or put on the site. Being that this is Bank of America, I would assume they probably have a national account. Are these, are these the fixtures they definitely will be buying, or are these possibly fixtures that may get substituted?
No, the Cree fixtures are their national account, and, and those are the fixtures they'll be using on this site.
Okay, what about the NLS? That's the one I'm gonna focus in on the most.
NLS. Yeah, the NLS is a custom light. From what I understand, this is the exact light that will be put on this site.
Okay. Could we just put some, some testimony on the record, if you don't mind, in regards to that fixture? Presently, the cut sheet indicates that it's gonna be dark-skY compliant, it's gonna be neighborhood-friendly and so forth. And as you know, along with our foot candle ratings in our ordinance, we also have requirements for glare and other issues in regards to being able to see the lamp and making sure that lamp is hidden well, so you don't have that glare as cars and people are going by the facility. With that fixture in particular, could you please provide some testimony that even if it gets substituted, it'll still meet those minimum dark-skY and neighborhood-friendly requirements?
It will, and any light that it, if it were to get substituted, would have to, but I think what the specific of these newer lights, these newer LED lights, the, uh, what we'll call the acrylic or whatever material they're using to create the whiteness of the light, the, the housing, will be more opaque than, than the current lights out there. You can sort of see the bulbs that are out there tonight, so...
Yeah, but the bulbs are worn out, so they don't really cause too much of a great...
Yeah, exactly. I, I think you'll see more of an overall white light rather than a bulb inside of these, just based on the LED.
I'm just concerned that it meets the dark-skY compliance, that's, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, the cut sheets and everything we get from the lighting company that we're using here says that they do. So that, if this light goes in, then they will comply with the dark-skY.
Or if it gets substituted, it'll still meet those minimum requirements.
It will have to, and any cut sheets that get substituted will have to have that regulation, yes.
And then the other thing was, in, in regards to the foot candles, you know, the last time you guys came in 2018, you did a really good job of indicating what were the state requirements of the foot candle ratings, and then what you were providing to meet that requirement. I don't see that on this document.
Yeah, that table did not make it onto these plans, and, and I apologize for that, I do realize the 2018 plan was...
Then, do you, do you happen to have, do you happen to have that table handy?
I do not have it for this proposed design. What I can say is I believe the minimums of this, of, of the lighting radius overall, the two foot candles is at 2.6, which is located at the bottom-left radius there, if you zoom into the bottom-left. That's the least illuminated portion of that light. And then, as far as the 10-foot candles, like, around the, the frontage of the ATMs, I do not have that number offhand.
Do you happen to know what the requirements are? Like, is there a requirement in front of the doors? Is there a requirement in front of the ATM? Is there, you have a 50-foot, if I remember right, from 2018, you had so many feet from the, the ATM, you had to maintain a minimum foot candle rating. Is there any testimony you could provide tonight in regards to that, and then show us how you're meeting that requirement? Because we're a rural town, we don't want you exceeding it, but we're happy to have you at least meet it.
Yeah, certainly, and I think the important piece to the application, I'll just restate, is that the overall lighting that's associated with the security radiuses that are closest to the road are not changing in any substantive way, because those lights were installed and approved in that 2018 application. As far as the regulations that are in the state statute, you can see that label at the bottom-left where it's a 50-foot radius, and that's what we're required to plot, provide, those two-foot candles measured at three feet above grade, which is what this plan displays. In addition to that, at all of the ATMs, as well as the entrance vestibules that include ATMs, we're required to provide 10-foot candles within a five-foot radius of those three points. Those three points are not, those, those radius, those five-foot radiuses are not shown, but if you just look at the plan within five feet of the door, those, those, those light levels comply and, and exceed those values.
Which is what I, my point is, you know, 10-foot candles is good, 20-foot candles is double that, and you're replacing those fixtures and showing us you're gonna have 20. Now, I don't know how the rest of the board's going to, to, uh, review that, but, you know, overlighting isn't good either.
And, and what I would say is that with the replacement of an older metal halide light that's under those canopies with the newer LED, I don't think there's gonna be a substantial increase in that illumination level. So we are showing 20, but I think what's there is comparable to that, that foot candle. I don't have the exact readings underneath those lights, but, actually, I, actually, I may have those exact readings of what they got there, so, let me see if I have this in my, it might be just in my email, but, but I do have the, the lighting study that was performed by G P.
It doesn't matter what it is now. I guess, I don't wanna be pain here, but I don't wanna see two and three times the light that's required by the state.
But Brian, that's the point he's trying to make, is he, he could, he's gonna look to see if he can give you the existing. It is relevant, because if the existing is 18 or 20-foot candles as he's proposing, then it, there's no change. That's what he, that's why he's trying to give you that comparative analysis.
And, and we miss an opportunity to make a change that's better for, for the town. Why are we, why are we so gung-ho in allowing them to overlight the areas?
But you're, you're looking at one, one picture. Remember that what, what our ordinance regulates is the average lighting intensity over the entire area, and that's where they have, um, point, they have four.
Right, they can't meet, they can't meet our ordinance, and they're two to three times...
But they exist at 3.8.
And they're, and they're two to three times greater than what the state requires them to do in a rural area. This isn't a city.
Well, it's Route 9. It's not a rural area, it's Route 9 in a shopping plaza. Like, if it was on a farm or like, halfway down, I know what you're saying.
I'm, I'm just one individual.
But this is Route 9, and I mean, I think they have to do it, right? Because it's the state statute also.
And I just wanna keep...
I know what you're saying.
I'm one, I'm one individual, so I'm not here to argue or cause a, cause a fuss. You know, it would, it would have been nice to have a, a, a chart that said, this is what the state requires, this is how we met it, these are the reasons why we can't meet it.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from on this, but I just, you know, I wanna focus the conversation on the fact that where those highest illumination levels that we're talking about at the entrances, there's already lights there. The increase that's occurring because of a switch from one light type, one light type to another, I think is gonna be marginally, it's gonna be comparable, and anybody that's traveling public, anyone that looks at this site, the only difference in lighting, if you're standing in that, in, standing in front of the bank, looking at the shopping center in the bank, you're gonna notice that the right side of the bank is a little bit more illuminated. Everything else that fronts the road, the driveway is staying exactly the same. It might be slightly brighter at the entrances to the two vestibules, but in a way that is comparable to the rest of the site. We're not asking for a large increase in those areas, just fresh fixtures that could increase it. It's, it's difficult, you know, it's three feet above grade, those, those are only mounted at nine. That's why those high levels come, is because you're actually five feet of difference between where you're taking the measurement and where that canopy is. But if you look at the gray, at the, at the lighting levels at grade, those drop more down to 16, 15-foot candles in that range, which is, you know, what a, what'll be perceived on-site. So I understand the concerns, and, and the table definitely could have been more detailed, but the increase of lighting in the brightest spots is not going to be, um, anything significant over what they're today. What you see at the bank today, which was appropriate, what seems appropriate to me in my, in my recent visits to the bank, um, will, will essentially be the same in the brightest spots and a little bit more light on the right side of the bank.
So if there's an approval, would you accept the condition that the plans be revised to provide that table to show compliance with the state statute?
No problem with that at all.
Is that okay with you? I'm only one vote, so, I've said my piece, there's no reason for me to continue.
We all, we know this location, it's, it's dark and dingy over there. You know what I mean? You have your wife going there at 12:00 p.m. to grab, you know, 20 bucks, it's a little bit, it's not, not the best area. So you guys are doing, you're doing just to break the place up. We should make Aldrich Plaza, we'd say.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
That place is terrible, that story. But, I'll get on to some though. We're good?
Anybody else have any questions? Any comments? All right, um, so I'm gonna, are you finished with your testimony?
Uh, we are.
I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody from the public has any questions, concerns, please come forward.
Hi.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Uh, it's Donna Simon, last name S I M O N. Um, I live at 2 Rustic Drive. Just a little, 'cause I, I have to tell you...
You have to speak into the mic, I have to be a little...
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to calm down a little bit, because, um, I agree with this gentleman here. Bank of America, for me, is in my kitchen, it's in my bathroom, it's in my laundry room, and it's in my bedroom. I think you guys are all familiar with where it is, and I think it's kind of being a little misrepresented by saying it's on Route 9, because, yes, it may face Route 9, but it's set back. And I think in my neighborhood, I might be the only house, the whole back of my house faces Aldrich Road and that plaza there. So everybody that leaves that shopping center, their lights are in the back of my kitchen. We've tried, um, putting things up on, uh, our windows to kind of block that lighting. And ever since Bank of America had switched over, like I said, they're in every part of my house, and especially in my bedroom. Like, I can't move my bed against my closets to avoid their lights coming right through my window. So I think that it's being a little misled or misrepresented, um, by saying it's, yeah, it's Route 9, it's dark, it's dingy, maybe the backside of Bank of America, but not what's facing Aldrich Road. And the lighting that's on the side of that plaza, those three lights, are exactly what shines into my house. And no matter what window you look out of, I see Bank of America. So if you guys wanna continue to do the lighting to meet standards, maybe come up with some sort of proposal to put up trees, um, shrubs, something to help block some of those lights. Because there is a little, um, area around the bend triangle where there are trees, but those trees have grown to a point to where the branches are above, um, where the lighting comes through, so. And it's unfortunate, I can't imagine anyone's gonna tear down those trees just to build or to replant lower trees to block the lighting. I don't have that problem with Chase. Yes, I can see Chase, but Chase is blue, and I believe their lighting also might have hoods, but they are on Route 9. They are truly facing Route 9. You guys are set back. The neighbor that's next to me, for them, they face, um, they face the other way. The only door that they have is to their kitchen that faces Bank of America. The house that's across from them, obviously, they get some sort of blockage from that house. The only other person that I can imagine has that issue is, um, the neighbor to my left. And, you know, and I just also wanna put it out there, I know this has nothing to do with it, but just try to understand from my point, I wish I had known or knew about the Levinson Axle Rod 2 lighting that comes through my front window, and that is, um, that changes. We get the weather, we get their updates, we get happy holidays, that comes right through our windows. So I don't understand how we can continue to, like this gentleman said, um, light this place up. It's, it's a rural area, we're not a city, so it's just something to think about or to consider if we're exceeding the standards. And I understand the reasoning, you know, for your safety, but it's already well-lit from what I can see.
Yeah, and the one, and the one comment I'll make is that this application does not change any of the lighting that would, that would impact your house. Everything is on the opposite side of the building.
Yeah, so what's done is already done. So basically, for me, the lights, everything, it's, I can't, that's not gonna change, it's not gonna improve, but now you're asking to add more lights to it, so it's like, well, what's the little difference if we go up a notch or two? It's already well-lit.
I guess I'm, I'm confused. So, so the plans are showing, you know, UU4s, UU4s near ATM3, UU1s out by Aldrich Road. Is this, is this a composite of what could be existing lighting and new lighting?
If you look at the table at the bottom of the page, you'll see that the UU1s through UU4s, all of those lights are out of scope. So they're represented, so we can get a full analysis of the illumination levels on-site, but they are not being changed, because those were installed as part of the 2018 application, which is not being changed.
Got it.
So all of the, the replace existing fixtures is what we talked about, the BA1s, the, the DB1s, all of those lights, but the only new fixtures, the only new introduction of lights are on the opposite side of Aldrich Road on that building to illuminate that drive aisle. It will not have an impact on any of the lighting that faces Aldrich. That, that light spill will not go around the building.
Miss, on, on Rustic, which, which one are you?
Two.
Um, at the very end by the cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm. So that house there that's on that cul-de-sac, um, you figure, the way they're, they face, the door that face, that's aligned with Bank of America goes to their kitchen, so that doesn't really affect them. I'm the one that's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm that bend. If you're, if you're going down Aldrich 9 and you, uh, Aldrich, and you wanna go on to 9, that bend, that's my whole backyard there.
Is that your above-ground pool? Or is that, there's a pool and then there's somebody next, all right, I see you.
Unless that's a really, really old...
That's 2022.
Oh, yeah, that's not, I don't have an above-ground pool.
It, you're, it, it's 2 Rustic, you think?
I'm 2 Rustic.
I don't know. Guys, you have, you have an example of great cutoff lighting. The, the, the lighting over at Soldier Memorial, if anybody's been there to see the new lighting that's been put up, you can see a true example of lighting that can be officially, properly cut off. If you go to, go to Soldier Memorial at night, there is no lighting in the woods, there's no lighting, pretty much, it, it really drops off significantly past the edge of the, the soccer fields. It's not impossible to provide a good lighting system. Unfortunately, it sounds like, you know, we may have missed the boat on 2018, because you're not changing those fixtures. I, I, I see what you're saying here now. However, if it's a good neighbor, if there's an opportunity for you to make some adjustments, you're hearing one of your neighbors.
Yeah, and what I would say is that I know, I know that these LED fixtures, it's relative, it's typically relatively easy to install, you know, what we'll call backlight sheets, the LEDs are a little bit, um, more customizable. We can look into that, I'm, I'm uncomfortable making a condition approval, because I don't, I don't know how those lights are installed, but it's certainly something that we can discuss, and if it's possible, I think it's easy, and, it's an easy add, and, and if it, if it helps with the light spill, you know...
Let me ask you this question. If you're, if you are above the state minimums, are, are you amenable to putting in any type of dimming system that could bring those light fixtures down to the state minimums?
Um, I, I can't, I don't have the information if we can install dimmers now on those lights, I don't know. I just don't know the answer to that question.
Fair enough.
I don't, I think all the bank is concerned with is being compliant, and, you know, obviously they have this company, GMR, that does the studies, but I, I can't, I just don't have the information, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
I have a question for, for you. We're looking at this overview on Google Earth right now, so it's telling us that your house is roughly a football field from the bank, but we see vegetation in between that. Doesn't that help you at all, or...
So, it used to, not anymore. Unfortunately, I think after one of the storms, one of our trees had died, so we no longer have, um, leaves on that. We do also have, um, trees that were planted along a fence, too, and they've kind of gotten to the point to where they're above, 'cause now, like I said, we get the lights coming from, um, the parking lot from Aldrich that come through, and then when you're on the road, when you're going down, um, Aldrich, and you make that turnoff, there's that space there, um, that has a row of trees, but same thing, that those trees have now reached a point to where they don't block the, the, our, our point-of-view, um, the lighting, so, yeah.
Yeah, so you're, you're right on the ramp there that goes to Aldrich to Route 9. So, okay. So, okay, we just want, I just wanted to get a perspective of where you were related
Yeah, I, a few years ago it was fine, because that vegetation did kind of block that, but now over the years, since it's, it's, I don't want to say it's overgrown, because it's not, but it has reached a point to where it's not filtering the lights coming from that shopping plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Your issues with the, with three lights that are on Aldrich?
Well, those are probably the main ones, the one, those lights that are on the side of the shopping plaza where I guess Bagel City is on top. Those are probably the worst, but like I said, Bank of America is well lit. No matter what window I look out, I can clearly see Bank of America.
I mean, Bagel City, though, is not, not any of the lights were taught, yeah.
Yeah, I did notice, I think I noticed the lights when I was driving through, the brightest lights are the three that are mounted on the side of that shopping center, yeah. I did notice those.
But those are, those are newer, those weren't always there, so I know that since Bank of America had switched over and taken over, I just assumed that that was part of Bank of America because, you know, to, to light that side of the building.
So what is the bigger issue, the three that are on the big, the big sentry?
All of it. If I, if I could change one thing, it would be those lights, but, yeah, the ones that are on that, that building, but if there's any additional lighting that's gonna go up in that area, I, I, yeah, I'm gonna have to say nay, no. It's, for me, I, I think it's well lit. I understand that the back parking area might be dark and dim, but that, that's something else that maybe needs to be reconsidered, how that's handled, but.
The, the trees and shrubs that used to block the light, do you know whose property they're on?
No, I think that's a town, I would assume that's a township, that little triangle area.
I would assume it's DOT.
Yeah, probably Lot 12, it's probably DOT.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, would this, would this issue, the city lighting, be something for code enforcement?
Yes.
And I don't want to- And I don't want to speak for another property owner, but I think those, those lights do shine out, and they're really meant for that drive aisle, so it might be just-
Yeah, they're not, they're not, um-
Yeah, they might be able to just turn on.
They're not like hooded, I'm gonna assume, that's the term that you guys use, where it's facing down, those are going straight out, so.
Yeah, you might want to contact code, code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
We can- We can bring it to Mr. Howard's attention also. Sure, we'll, we'll do that also.
Brian, as far as the, the three lights that are on Aldrich, the three fixtures, is there any kind of, because you're in this field, is there any kind of hood or something that could get the light to go on an angle back into the barn lot?
I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not the expert, so I'm not gonna say, but I'm, I'm sure they could probably try to see if there's something that plus.
Brian, I don't think your mic is on. Brian-
Your mic is not on.
Sorry, it's not for me, it's not for me to say. I'm not the professional here. They have, they have the professional, it's his, it's his job.
Yeah, I mean, as you, your opinion, those three lights that are on the Aldrich side, if the, just those three, if the, if the, the candidate, I don't know how to word it, is that the right word, you're changing the light?
Yeah, so I just, I am, I'm happy to take it back to the, to Bank of America and their lighting consultant, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable making it a condition to make any changes, because I just don't know how they were installed, if it's possible, all of that, you know, the technology change, but it's, it's, if it's, if it's a simple fix, I'm sure Bank of America would be interested.
Ms., we're trying to work with you.
Sure, no, I, I appreciate that.
We were concerned with your, with your, with what's going on with your quality of light and all that stuff. Tomorrow, please contact Mr. Howard and start with that.
Okay.
Because that's obviously more than what Bank of America issue is at this time, right?
Good?
Fair enough, yeah. Anybody else from the public have any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. Any other questions? Okay, do you want to, you have a summary?
Actually, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a pretty straightforward application, and hopefully you'll agree to approve the minor site plan amendment, along with the waiver.
And you'll go back to, you, you will go back to Bank of America and address, see if they can make some sort of, if it's possible.
Yes, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Yes, we'll agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you say you'll look at that, does that mean that? I, I, I think beyond you looking at that, you're gonna have to communicate what the result was to, to the board's professionals.
You will, we will agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. So, Ron, I guess my question, what are we voting on? Are we voting on this, or are we voting on what is potentially gonna come back before, you know, I'm, I'm a little confused here.
You're voting, they're not promising anything.
Right, right, yeah.
So you're voting on this.
What is proposed correct, right now?
And they'll make their, you know, due diligence to see what Bank of America can do. Okay. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
No.
Mr. Leggio?
I agree with Mr. Husser, I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
No.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Four yeses, three noes, applications approved, motion carries.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Board is gonna take a five-minute recess, they'll be back at 8:25. The planning board will now reconvene.
All righty. Okay, so next up is case number SP 1110, Howell 360 LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Evan Zimmerman. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Giordano, Haller, and Cisla in Red Bank, New Jersey. I'm pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Howell 360 LLC. Start out by saying that this is a project that has been contemplated in the township for quite a while, and we're very pleased to bring it to fruition tonight with this application. To set the stage, by way of background, the township in 2018 entered into a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and other interested parties to provide for its fair share of affordable housing in the township. And as a result of the settlement agreement, there was a court order that was entered, and after the court order, the township developed the ML 13 zone to provide for that opportunity. We're here tonight with a plan that complies largely with those requirements. It provides for 360 residential rental units on the property, 30% of which will be dedicated for affordable housing. We provided public notice of this application tonight and provided proof of service to the board. I have with me tonight our professionals, Tim Lurie, our project engineer, as well as Tom Brennan, our project architect, Scott Kennel, our traffic consultant, and Christine Capone, who's here to present planning testimony. So without any further ado, I'd ask that we bring up Mr. Lurie to get into the site plan.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Tim Lurie, L-U-R-I-E.
Just a little closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Tim Lurie, L-U-R-I-E. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner, and certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Lurie, I'd ask that you describe your credentials before the board, and ask that you be accepted as an expert.
Sure, I have both a bachelor's and master's in engineering from Stevens in Hoboken. I've been a licensed professional engineer for over 20 years. I have testified in front of this board before a couple times. In addition, I have testified for, on site plans and residential subdivisions throughout the state of New Jersey.
We'll, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lurie, could you start by describing the location of the property, zoning, and its existing condition?
Can we put the one exhibit up that's the rendering, that has the, one with the landscape, and one number is that?
Sure, so I'd ask-
The landscape rendering you sent today?
Correct.
Uh, it's marked as 826 on your sheet.
Overall planting plan, 826?
It's one of the three renderings we sent.
Under exhibits, I'm on agenda to visit this Howell 34. No, 820, oh, I don't know what 826 is, 826 again?
Thank you.
Okay, the, the site consists of lots 23 through 26, Block 137 in Howell Township. The address is 1400 Route 9 South. We are located in the ML 13 zone. The site itself consists of 20 acres. There's 840 feet of frontage along Route 9 South. The whole site currently is a wooded undeveloped site. We have wetlands and a stream located in the rear of the property, where we have an LOI, LOI with the Department of Environmental Protection with a 50-foot buffer on the LOI. The existing topography ranges from elevation 92 to 95 in the front, and at the rear of the site, it goes to 86 to 88, elevation 88. We currently have the existing utilities we have on site. We have water and gas along Route 9 and electric, and we also have sewer and water located on Fort Plains Road that's in the rear of the site. We are proposing, we're proposing consolidate this into one lot. We're proposing 12 buildings containing 360 units. 108 of those 360 units will be affordable, where, and there are a mix of bedrooms. In addition, we are providing 17, 719 parking spots on the property, where 15% of the parking spots will be EV-ready, which will be located in the garages of these buildings, in the garages of buildings to, to meet the 15% requirement. In addition, we meet all the bulk requirements of the site, so there's no variances for any side, front, or rear setbacks. We have the coverages consistent. We have building coverage of 30% is required by the ordinance. We have 20.5% of building coverage on the site. The impervious coverage, we have, 70% is allowed per the ordinance. We have 56.3% provided on the impervious site. We have, as you see the layout, you will come in off of Route 9 South into a dualized boulevard entrance. The first building that you will hit is the recreation building, which has a pool and a playground area in the rear of the rec building. In addition, after you go up beyond the rec building, that's where you will go into 24-foot wide travel lanes with parking in the middle, which are 9 by 18, to allow proper parking and circulation around the site. In addition, we have, each, each of the units has garages, which will be, in the rental agreements stated, the garages cannot be used for storage, and they can only be used for parking cars. In addition, we have parking spaces in front, in front of the garages. The, as you see, as we come into the, into the site with the rec building, the rec building is located within the, all the principal building setback requirements, so the rec building could be located, a regular apartment building could be located there, but we feel that coming into the site, it's best to see the rec building first, and then go into, and then go into the site. In addition, we also have a sales trailer and construction trailer, temporary construction trailer, which will be located right off the boulevard, and the, they will remain, the sales trailer will remain until the CO of the rec building, which in turn will be able to, the sales office will be able to move into the rec building. The construction trailer will stay throughout construction. We're proposing to do this site all one phase, so once the construction is done and the buildings are getting our CO'd, then the construction trailer will, will be removed. In addition, we have, as a result, we have one variance of this site. It's for the rec building, which is considered an accessory building for your ordinance of 15 feet. We are proposing a rec building of 22 feet to conform with the character of the buildings that are throughout the site.
When you say one variance, initially, there were, you were flagged for two variances, one for the buffer. It looked like you had put a wall in to address it, but that did not wind up on the, on all sheets of your plan.
Yeah, it's on some of the plans, and it will, we can, we'll update the plans to show that we do, we do not need that variance for the encroaching in the buffer. In addition, throughout the site, we have the, we have dumpsters that are located throughout the site, which are spaced in between the buildings to allow proper garbage areas for all, for all the units. We are proposing, also bike racks are located throughout the site to allow, you know, storage of bicycles on this site. We also have a bus stop, which is gonna be located right off the rec area, which will be enclosed structure, and it'll be, it'll be made, the appearance will be made to conform with the buildings that are of the apartment buildings. In addition, we are providing 30-foot lights, light poles throughout the site, which are LED lights. We are requesting a waiver for the minimum light level of that in section 188-22, where we had currently in the review, in the engineer's review letter, they, we had a light average of 3.67-foot candles. We can, we have 150-watt lightbulb, LED lightbulbs, which we can reduce some of that wattage and be able, we'll still need the waiver, but we can bring that lighting down into two-to-three-foot candles to be more in conformance to parking lot standards according to IES. In addition, our proposed utilities, we will be connecting into the existing water line that's in Route 9 and running it through the site, and then running out the rear of the site, where we are gonna loop it and connect it into Fort Plains Road. The sewer for the site, since the Route 9 area is the highest elevation, it's gonna flow by gravity to an onsite pump station located in the rear of site, and then in the same easement, the force mains gonna run through, run to Fort Plains Road and tie into the existing manhole. This is all, we've reviewed this all with New Jersey American Water, and that was their suggestion to put the pump station and how to loop the water main.
Are you looping, is, are you looping to main to help Fort Plains? Is that the reason for looping it?
Well, we're, we're doing, we're doing so we can have two connections.
Got it, okay.
In addition, the store, we're, we're proposing stormwater management system in accordance with township and DEP regulations, because we'll have to get a DEP permit for the crossing of the utilities. As a result of the new green infrastructure regulations, we broke all our drainage areas up into less than 2.5 acres, which we're proposing underground recharge areas of storm scepters and ADS piping in different, located throughout different areas of the site. In addition, we'll be having, where we're not discharging the roof leaders directly into dry, into the drywells, we will have manufactured treatment devices for the water quality aspect of the site to further clean any, any, to be more in conformance with DEP standards. In addition, we, the, the site, we, we reviewed the ordinance Article 4 about the standards of performance for noise, et cetera. We will conform to all those standards. We will have improvements along Route 9, which will be have to be approved by the DOT. In addition, we will have, we will comply with outside agency approvals we already have. We have Monmouth County Planning Board, the Fire Bureau, we've addressed his comments and received a letter, no comment. The Farmland, we received a letter from them with no comments. In addition, we've received a letter from the Environmental Commission with some comments, which we are addressing. One of the comments they talk about is in the Phase 1. This area's in a Tier 1 for radon, so as a result of that, that will, that'll fall into a building criteria for the, for the architect to design the foundations and make sure they mitigate any possible radon issues that might be there or might not be there. In addition, we will also put notes on the plan to state clean fill, and the light, the lighting system will be all private, along with the, the roadway system is private also, which in turn, we will be, we will allow Title 39 to allow police access into the- allow police access into the site. And that pretty much summarizes the whole layout of the site.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. There are a couple of comments from the review letters that I'd ask you to go back and address. First is with regard to the clubhouse and its proposed use. Can you confirm that the clubhouse use would be limited to residents and their guests?
That is correct.
Okay, and as such, it's an accessory to the principal use of the site? Leave with that, oh, can you describe the signage for the site?
Oh, yeah.
Proposed two monument signs, correct?
Corey Ors, we provide two monument signs, one, one along Route nine in conformance with the Township on setbacks. And the area of ten square feet, we're allowed a second monument sign, which we'll have as a ID sign for the community located once we get into, into the boulevard of the site.
And those signs have not been designed yet, but will be designed to be compliant with the ordinance?
That's correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. Laurie, if there are any questions from the board or your professionals?
I do. The playground, is the playground also private?
For the community, yes.
Okay. And just for the, for the record, private means the Township doesn't have to plow the, plow the roads or maintain the playground equipment? Okay. Ms. Newman, it may have been a different project when I looked at your report, but I thought I saw in your report a comment about sidewalks along Route nine, but when I read the plans, it looks like they're providing sidewalks.
I can answer that. We, that was a comment that was one of the review letters, and we, in the revision of the plans, we added sidewalks.
So, you are providing the sidewalks on Route nine, okay. And then, the only other comment I have is, is the, the temporary trailer parking area, is that staying, or is that going to be grass when it's done?
That'll, that'll be converted back to grass when it's done.
And then, the parking that, that will be used for the clubhouse, that is the, the half-moon circle?
That is correct.
Could I, Ms. Newman, I don't see any bollards in the parking spots that are facing, it doesn't look like the whole half-moon needs to be done, but there's probably about one, two, three, four, five, six, probably about six or seven. Do you want to zoom in on that area? That may require some bollards to meet our ordinance.
We have, we have curbing, six-inch curbing there also.
Our professional will let you know why. We changed our ordinance and added bollards.
Yeah, curbing isn't enough. We require a CD barrier. Typically, it ends up being a bollard anywhere where parking abuts the sidewalk, abuts the building. So, it looks like it's probably...
Said the two handicaps and probably two, two, two on either side of it is...
Well, certainly, yeah, bollards and...
We call it the Paul Schneider ordinance.
I had saw that there was a street tree requirement that you were seeking relief from.
Well, we provide street trees. That's part of this last we read.
I believe that was a prior comment that has since been addressed with the recent motion.
And the, the spacing requirement is now complied with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your bus stops, over here, that's for, for school, that's for school buses, is it for like a...
Yes, for the kids, yes. It's going to be enclosed.
Thanks.
It's right.
The kids are going to be walking through the complex, back to that's where they're all going to go.
Yes, correct.
Thanks.
And then, the school bus is going to have to search the way through and then come back around, right?
Yes. We provide a truck, a school bus turning template to show that on the plan.
Ms. Newman, this is a question for you. Well, it's kind of a question for you and for the applicant. Projects like this, I would assume, would be phased? Is that a fair statement? Or are you planning on building all the fixtures?
We're doing, we're doing all at once.
Doing all, literally everything all at once?
Yes.
Okay. If it does change to be a phase, Ms. Newman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have a new ordinance that requires the vegetation to remain in place until they're ready to, to, to build that?
Yes, I don't believe, we allow a site to be completely cleared if it's, if it's going to be constructed in phases.
Okay, so just keep, keep that in mind, you know, otherwise, if you stop and it phases, you're going to be putting trees back.
And there's not going to be any access from Fort Plains Road?
Correct. We, we, there's no access.
There's no access because of the...
Because of the wetlands, correct.
One way in, one way out.
That's correct.
And the only other thing I just want to bring to the board's attention, it looks like we probably would need some bollards on this building side. Everybody can see, that's the only place where I think that we have parking on the sidewalk to the building.
Yeah. Yeah, we can put them in there.
And I don't, I don't know if this... You'll revise the plans to provide those bollards?
That's correct, yes.
I don't know if this was addressed in the revisions to the plan.
So, if I could ask you a couple of questions, Mr. Laurie. We have a technical engineering review. It's review number four. Do you agree to comply with all those items?
Yes, we do.
And EV parking, I don't, I don't know if I missed that?
We, yes, EV parking where the fifteen percent will be put in the different garages of the building.
All right, so I'm going to bring this up here. I, I don't see it in Howell, but in other towns, I just want to make sure that's really noted in the resolution, because then what ends up happening is they go to get their construction permits. And the electrical sizing, if they're going to provide the fifteen percent within garages, we need to make sure that gets covered on the permits. In other towns, I'm having issues where people are making the representation that we're going to do it in the garage, and then they're submitting their construction permits and they're getting lost. And it's, it's electrical load-wise, it's pretty substantial. So, I just want to make sure... That's correct.
But how are you determining which units are going to get that? That's just...
Well, we, we have to provide a minimum of fifteen percent, and it might be possible when they start, when the architect gets into design plans of doing more. So, we're, we're stating right now, we're going to do the required fifteen percent.
And then, as far as when you said storage with the garages, you mean, you don't want them...
It's going to be in our lease agreements that people have to use the garages for garages, and they can't store all their stuff and then park their car elsewhere.
Okay, that's, that's going to be the...
Yes, these, these are apartments, not townhomes.
But the one question, his question though, is when, how are you deciding which fifteen percent, like, are you just going to put them sporadically through and that's part of when?
These buildings are all the same, so they can put the, they can, they can put the same amount in each building.
Now, the question is, which unit owners are going to have the benefit of it?
Yeah, like, if I want to rent an apartment, but I don't have an EV, but that's the only apartment you have available, you understand what I'm saying? Like, who, how are you going to know which garage to put the EV charging system in?
Are you going to tell the people that are going to come and rent there, oh, by the way, these units here have a charging station if you have a, an electric car?
That is correct.
That's, that's all?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering how you were, like, the randomness of it is what I was curious about, okay?
That's all we know, we're just wondering, you know, what's the chances of you burning that out and then, you know, that person having an EV, you know, that's over.
Okay.
Tim, are you the person to answer environmental questions?
Sure.
To the best of your knowledge?
Best of my knowledge.
Uh, Phase One was done, and it says testimony will be provided regarding past agricultural use?
I'm not too sure about what the past agricultural use was, because it's, right now, as you see, it's, it's...
All right, I'll tell you, there was past agricultural use on this property, and we have an ordinance that requires sampling of the soil. I just wanted to know if that was done.
Not that I know of, but we can, we can certainly provide sampling.
Okay, yeah, I know if Phase One was done, I just don't know if a Phase Two was recommended.
I don't believe that the Phase One, well, Mr. Laurie, did the Phase One recommend a Phase Two or further sampling?
It would recommend, but I don't know if it did or not.
Well, that's my question, is, is did the Phase One recommend?
I don't recall.
I believe that it did.
Yeah, because we, we've, I've never, I'm a member of the Environmental Commission. I've never seen the Phase One. And it said it was included for review. All I have is a seven-page letter, certainly not a Phase One report.
I believe our Phase One was submitted to this board in connection with this application as well. I don't know whether it was submitted to the...
Well, the thing, the link that I'm clicking on that says Phase One report is seven pages, and a Phase One's a lot longer than that. This is almost like a letter saying that a Phase One's included.
I think that's...
I don't know if you've, or if you've seen it.
I'm going to pull it up. It was, they had a Phase One environmental assessment by Singer Environmental Group. I got it, I got it, no. This is a hundred and seventy-one pages.
Yeah.
I could probably hop to the conclusions to see...
The thing I'm clicking on that says Phase One environmental assessment is a letter from New Lines. Oh, hold on, now I got her. First time I'm seeing this. Yeah, all they mentioned is radon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I recall. But we can, we can certainly do sampling. That's not an issue. We're just, we're doing up north now.
Nick, do you want to see it?
No, I got it.
Okay.
I got it now, thanks.
Yeah, the Environmental Commission should have had it with their September flat reviews. That's when it was submitted.
Yeah, because there was a comment about the radon from, in their review letter.
All right, thanks.
If there are no further questions for Mr. Laurie?
Guess not. You can bring back, bring up your next witness.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I ask that Thomas Brennan be sworn as our project architect.
Hey, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Thomas Brennan, B-R-E-N-N-A-N.
Mr. Brennan asks that you please provide the board with your qualifications, and I ask that Mr. Brennan be accepted as an expert in this field.
Okay, yes. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey for over thirty years. I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from New York Institute of Technology, and I've been practicing and been before boards before. I think the last time I was here in Howell was maybe about ten or twelve years ago. It hasn't been recent. But I've been accepted and given testimony at other planning boards recently.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, you prepared exhibits for the board's consideration this evening?
Yes.
And can you describe the exhibit that's up on the screen?
Yes, the, the one that's on the screen right now is the perspective of the elevation of the buildings as, as was described, is there's twelve buildings on the site, of which there are three building types. And the three building types, the only difference is internal, and it's based on the fact of the location of the various different affordable units that we have to put in here. So, there are one, two, and three-bedroom affordable units, and that's what makes up the three building types. However, the exterior of the building stays the same, and the materials are as shown, there's stone, there's vinyl siding, there's a little bit of metal roof, there's some accents of shutters. And, and as you can see, it pretty much describes the character of the elevation, keeping a more residential scale that people prefer, so.
And the buildings themselves have been designed with the requirements of the ML thirteen zone in mind?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it asks that we bring up the next exhibit, which would be the...
Let's bring up the floor plan first. Let me run through that real quick. So, here's a typical Building A floor plan. As you can see, in the front or the lower portion on the first floor are all the garages. So, there's fifteen garages in, in the building, and basically, they're the individual private garages that will be leased out to a tenant. From there, you walk down a common corridor to the elevator, which sits in the middle, opposite the lobby and the mailroom and basically the package room in, well, yeah, thank you. In that area, I really could use this thing, I guess, right? There we go. So, yeah, so that, that's the, the lobby comes in here, there's the, oops, there's the package room, the mail area here, the elevator is right there. And then, on the, as you can see, all the units are basically distributed, you can see there's some two-bedroom As, anything that starts with an A is an affordable unit. And if we go to the second floor, it just goes up a little bit, you can see there's some one-bedroom affordables. The other building has the three-bedroom affordable, but there's, they're intermingled, integrated within the units or within the buildings. And primarily, all buildings will have fire stairs. There's the fire stair, which you can see right here, and then there's one over here. The corridors all meet life and safety. They have sprinkled, the whole entire building is sprinkled with an NFP thirteen R system. And there's, let's see, what else was there? It will, as was stated, if it would be required to have a radon, we will incorporate a radon detail for the buildings.
Sorry, can you educate me? How, how do you, how do you determine you're going to need a radon system in that? What's the, I want to put it on the record, what, I don't know, I don't know how you come about determining that?
There's a study that needs to be done. So, as part of the Phase One, like Nick asked, that was the only thing that was flagged. So, wouldn't it be this professional?
Got it.
They'd have to do a radon survey of the property.
Now, do they have to do a radon survey at every single location they're going to have a building, or is it just one or two areas?
There's, there's an EPA map that has the whole state of New Jersey, and it's Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. So, there's certain areas in New Jersey that radon isn't really a concern. And if the tier is a certain level, then it is a concern. Typically, it's your, you know, your radon, you vent it through the roof through pipes.
And primarily, our aspect of it is if it's required, then we have a detail that's put in, incorporated into the building.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You know, the units per se all have what, they're, they're all heated and cooled with what they call a magic pack unit, was, which is sitting up here, out on the balconies. And they primarily are self-contained unit that has heat and air conditioning, so there's no on-the-ground air conditioning vents that are, are requirements on the ground, although there will be two for the common area. So, there'll be just two locations that'll be screened as required. But from a point of view, this is a, a very environmentally efficient system, and it works extremely well for these size of units. The units, and of course, as you know, was started with a hundred, or eight hundred and six square feet, and they go up to twelve eighty-four for the larger unit. So, there's a good diversification within the square footage. The units are light and airy, they're open, they, they're very marketable. And we feel this would be a very successful project, so. The siding, yes, yes.
Sorry. I'll repeat that, because I'm sure everybody, the vents you're providing for the magic packs, they'll be color matched to match the siding?
That is correct, yeah. They'll be painted right out till they'll blend in.
What about any of the dryer or bathroom vents or, or kitchen ventilation as well? How is that being...
The dryer vents and, and those type of vents are smaller, and they'll actually come out, they'll be, you probably, they're done in a trim that matches the trim, the white, as we were proposing gray siding with white trim around it. The little dryer vents, when they come out, we could get them that's painted, but usually they come standard as white, and they're, they kind of disappear on the face of the building, so.
Are you, are you planning on having, are you, are you doing bathroom dryer? Are you planning on kitchen exhaust as well? Are you having three or two vents come out the...
That would be determined by the mechanical engineer, but typically, there's just the, the dryer vent comes out, and then there's also a vent for the, so what else, what other vents are there? That would really be it, is the dryer vent and the...
And the bathroom. And the bathroom.
The bathroom, yes.
Are you, are you planning on having them be individual vents or is there an opportunity to combine them?
I don't believe from a mechanical point of view, you can actually combine them. So they would be one per unit.
If there's a product available on the market that would allow you to combine them, is that something you would entertain?
Yes, we would, yeah. But we leave the mechanical stuff to the mechanical engineer who we retain and work with us on the project, so.
And I'd recommend those be color matched as well to the, to the siding.
Yes.
Okay.
No, every building will be the same. It'll be a cohesive community that, um, will feel like a community. Yeah, all the signage is also governed by the fire marshal who's gonna kind of come in and say, you wanna put building one and then they might want an address or something, but that will be on the exterior of the building mounted, um, as per the sign ordinance for the town, so. I know we can talk about the.
Yeah, if there are no further questions about the buildings, let's move to the clubhouse. So could you describe the exhibit that's before the board now?
Sure, this is a perspective of what the clubhouse would look like. Um, it's a two-story building. Um, as you come in with the floor plan, um, you have a leasing office, you have a fitness area, you have a, a large area for community gathering, uh, a small kitchen area, kitchenette area, and then upstairs we put in a, what we've been doing now is more of a, um, quiet area. So, you know, downstairs they have all the TVs and, you know, noisy stuff that's in the club room, but then upstairs, um, it's been determined that they like to have a quiet area in a clubhouse like this. Uh, and again, what we were trying to do is make a statement because this is the first building you see. As you come into the project, y- you know, you wanna be looking, if you've never been here before, you're looking for the leasing center, it's gonna be identifiable right away. It's a, a nice building, it's a strong element and, um, that's what we feel would be appropriate at the location where it's at, so.
There is a variance that's associated with this building. Could you talk about the building height and the variance that you're seeking?
Sure. Um, I guess the ordinance in town is 15 feet, which is a one-story building and with no, no roof, it's a flat roof. So if you can figure, picture a retail center that you see on Route 9, that's what's designed, that's what would be, have to be designed to fit this location because you can't do any height here at all. Um, so the variance is, is incorporating the aesthetics of what you see. You wanna be able to have the nice, you know, two-story, the, the, the nice, uh, appointments and the, and the elevation character and that's why the, the variance is required so you can achieve those, um, with the building height, so.
Yeah, so the, um, reason a variance is required, uh, for the clubhouse is because it's considered an accessory building and the maximum permitted height for accessory buildings is 15 feet, but that's really intended for like a shed or something like that. Um, and I think that, you know, what they're proposing fits with what, what is typical of a clubhouse for this type of, um, development and is certainly more aesthetically pleasing than if they were to meet the, uh, 15 feet.
And you can confirm that the, the height, uh, according to the ordinance definition is 22 feet?
Uh, yes, yes. Our, our, the average building height of this particular building would be 22 feet.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Brennan? Otherwise, I have no further questions.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call our third witness, Scott Kennel, who's here to testify as to traffic matters.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this words, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Yes. Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've testified before this board as well as the Howell zoning board on many occasions and I've testified in over 100 municipalities on over 2,000 applications.
We see you all the time. We accept your credentials.
Thank you. Uh, as part of our work effort here, uh, we prepared a traffic impact study dated July 13, 2022. I got, I was engaged in this project back in 2021 where the most important aspect from a traffic standpoint was how we're gonna access the site. So back in 2021, we had a pre-application meeting with NJDOT and presented them with a concept to modify the signalized intersection so that we could accommodate traffic directly from the north and the south. So basically, this site plan has been designed to modify the southbound jug handle and basically it's a design similar to what was done down at Sunnyside Road with the, the Veranda development. Um, so based on that proposal, NJDOT endorsed this conceptually and based on the, the board's favorable approval, we'll proceed with formal design plans with NJDOT to develop, uh, improved geometrics at this location as well as an upgraded traffic signal system. Uh, with this development and considering the amount of traffic to be generated by 360 apartments, we were, we came up with a, um, an analysis to determine that the, the intersection would operate at Level Service C during the afternoon and Level Service B, well within the acceptable ranges accepted by NJDOT. Um, again, that's still subject to a formal submission to NJDOT with the analysis and the, uh, geometric design, but I'm confident based on the pre-app meeting and my extensive experience dealing with NJDOT that this, uh, this intersection improvement will be something they will approve in conjunction with this development. Um, as far as the site plan itself, Mr. Laurie has testified extensively that we're providing, uh, parking that is compliant with the ordinance and the residential site improvement standards and the internal, uh, layout has been designed to accommodate the large wheelbase vehicles that will be, um, on the site, including buses and, uh, refuse vehicles. So in my opinion, this site has been designed to provide positive onsite circulation and will be able to accommodate, um, uh, the use as proposed. That basically summarizes my direct.
Scott, how, how is it going to impact the northbound, um, jug handle?
The north, we're, we're gonna align this. Basically what's happening is, is the southbound jug handle there, and the northbound are offset as they intersect Route 9.
Yep.
The southbound will be extended, so it is, um, shifted to a southerly direction. So we're aligned with the northbound to create a, basically a four-way intersection and that northbound, excuse me, that northbound ramp provides two approach lanes. So what'll occur there is the inside lane will be dedicated for left turns or U-turning vehicles and then the other lane will be assigned to, uh, traffic going to the apartment complex.
Cause it's two, it's two lanes now, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And basically just, for the board's benefit, the southbound ramp that will be reconfigured, the plan showed is 26 feet, but it'll, I'm expecting to go to probably, uh, 30 feet in width so we can provide two lanes because given the, the utilization of that ramp by the New Jersey transit buses with their maintenance yard just to the north of there, um, you wanna have a design that we can probably have two lanes on that ramp so traffic going into the apartment complex can bypass, uh, the traffic that's making U-turns.
I have no further questions for Mr. Kennel if anyone else does. Otherwise, we're prepared to move to our last witness.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call Mr. Christine Cofone, our professional planner.
Hello.
Hold on a minute. Oh, are we lost, Arthur? We're good, Austin. Thank you. The reinforcements are stuffing in.
Mr. Cofone requires some swearing in. We've moved on.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this words, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record and.
Hi, good evening for the record. Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've been testifying in the state of New Jersey for almost 30 years as such. My licenses are current and valid. I've been qualified before both of your boards in Howell on numerous occasions as well as in excess of 450 or so other boards through the state, um, many occasions and I am an affordable housing special master in about 30 different communities.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a substantially conforming and very straightforward application. This is part of your affordable housing plan here in Howell and we are seeking only one variance in conjunction with this application. We are seeking a variance for the height of the proposed clubhouse. Um, it's proposed to be 22 feet where the ordinance restricts accessory structures to 15 feet. I actually, I agree with Ms. Bell. That was put in the ordinance to deal with things such as sheds. This is a more grand, uh, structure, if you will, than a typical shed, so I think the board can certainly look at this under the C2 section of the statute, which talks about in the absence of any hardship, if you find that one or more purposes of the land use law would be advanced by the application, you can certainly grant the variance. In this case, I think we can rely on criteria A of the land use law, which talks about promoting the general welfare. As we indicated, this is an inclusionary project and what that means is when we say inclusionary, that just means you're gonna build the affordable housing units on site. So it's inclusionary, you're gonna have in excess of 300 total units and in excess of 100 affordable units. So certainly having a nice, robust, state-of-the-art amenity package certainly promotes the general welfare, which is criteria A. Criteria I of the land use law talks about a desirable visual environment. Um, if we could go back to the structure, the accessory structure, it has great curb appeal, great peaks, great, um, changes in the, in the roof lines, which makes it, would make it an attractive structure. And as Mr. Laurie indicated in his direct, the location of the proposed clubhouse is in a location where we could have it, an apartment building as of rate, much taller. So it's certainly not that the ordinance didn't contemplate a structure at this height in this location, cause it certainly did. We could put one of our apartment buildings here. So for that reason, I think the board can conclude that certainly we fall under the C2 section of the statute, advancing criteria A and criteria I, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good if in fact the board were to move favorably on the application. And I apologize for having a cough drop in my mouth, but it's better than me coughing through my entire testimony, so.
Didn't even notice.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If I may, just in summary, um.
Gotta open it to the public.
Please.
So, I'm gonna open it to the public for any comments or questions. Am I not surprised? Seeing none, gonna close it to the public.
Thank you, thank you all for your time and attention in this matter. Um, as I mentioned, this is a project that's been contemplated for quite some time here in the township. Uh, we're here before you with a largely compliant plan with only the one variance. You've heard testimony from all of our professionals and I ask that you please approve the application tonight. Uh, there are a couple of conditions that we discussed throughout the course of testimony, which we're prepared to comply with, namely bollards in front of the clubhouse building, bollards at the rear of one of the residential buildings where there's parking abutting the rear of the building, uh, and you also heard testimony that our, our lighting will be revised to be IES compliant.
And if, if it's a product available on the market, you'll combine the dryer exhaust and any of the other exhausts for the apartment into a common, uh, outlet and have that color match to the siding, color of the siding of the building.
Correct.
And that the louvers will be paint, painted. And I also think the phase one needs to be put in there, Nick?
No, no, it's, it's, well.
Well, I mean, don't you need, it's agricultural, right? So they need to run a phase one.
Their phase one's done, it's whether or not a phase two is appropriate.
And I guess that, that was my question. I guess it's a condition of approval. If a phase two is, is required, they gotta come back. Is that, is that something, Ron?
No, I, I think basically they have to do the radon test is, is what it is.
No, it's, it's agri.
Well, I guess.
The findings of the phase one though did not conclude that a phase two is necessary. If a phase two is necessary, then it would have to be done, but I don't, unless it changed the design of the plans, it would not need to come back to the board, but based upon the, the review of the document, what appears to have been recommended is a radon study.
I think you guys are focusing on a radon. If I could just divert for a second, cause you, this is not my expertise, definitely will, will, will take yours. I believe Nick indicated that in his, as the environmental liaison to the board, he indicated that, that there was evidence that this property was a past agricultural site.
That's a different comment, so that's the soil, uh, the soils and that's in our technical report, which our engineer agreed to comply to.
Right, so what is that?
So that's compliance with 188-26.1 historic pesticide site sampling procedure.
Okay, so what happens if when they run that test and they find something in there from the agriculture?
Again, unless it changes the design of the plan, if they needed to do remediation, it would be in course of the development and unless it changed the design.
Okay, so it's not, it's nothing significant then? It just has to be done?
Correct.
Part of?
And if it changed anything, if anything was not consistent with as was represented, it changed the design, they'd have to come back.
Does that need to be a condition of the approval or that's just something that just has to happen regardless because they're building something?
It is a condition of the approval that, um, they have, they have to comply with all of the, uh, comments and recommendations contained in the reports of the board's professionals and in doing that, any application, if an outside agency's approval or some condition of approval changes the design that we've approved, then they have to come back.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't getting missed.
Thank you. No further comments? I'd ask for your favor.
There was one other comment, I think, Laura, was the, with the EV.
Yeah, that'll be an explicit condition.
That'll be, okay, cool. Um, does anybody have any other comments, questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the application with all of the, the noted items.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries, application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Um, let's see. No master plan update right now.
We just did one.
Do we have any, uh, reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, bye.
Yeah, thank you.